Good evening, everyone. We are on the record. This is a municipal council meeting, regular council meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Tuesday, the 10th day of February 2015. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 6:13. May we have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Councilperson Kajuski.
Yeah.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Here.
Councilperson Bajana.
Here.
Councilperson Young.
Here.
Councilperson Osborne.
Here.
Councilperson Coleman.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera.
Here.
Councilperson Waterman.
Here.
And Council President LaVaro.
Here.
We have nine members in attendance at 6:13 PM. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please?
Andrea Goodwin, employee at New Jersey City University. Mary Garjulo, who celebrated her 94th birthday on February 3rd at the Jersey City Medical Center. She was a lifelong resident of Jersey City and the daughter of the late Mary and Charles Pennella, and proprietor with her husband of Joe's Market on Summit Avenue for 45 years.
Davinja Danoran.
Kindly remain standing as we salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I got two mics. On behalf of City Council President LaVaro, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2015, and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 26, 2014. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, February 5, 2015, at 4:00 PM to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Council members, before we go on to our regularly scheduled business, I'm going to need a motion to add 10Z8 through 10Z13 to the agenda, with the exception of 10Z7, which was withdrawn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Coleman. On the motion to add 10Z8 through 10Z13 to the agenda, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to add 10Z8 through 10Z13 to the agenda.
Shaun.
Yes.
Like to have motion to defer to 10Z10.
I have a motion by Councilperson Rivera to defer to 10Z10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Osborne. On the motion to defer to 10Z10, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to defer to 10Z10. Council President LaVaro, are you going to read it into the record before we vote?
Sure.
Okay.
The resolution entitled "Recognizing Frank R. Conwell PS3 Tigers for Establishing February 12, 2015 as Jam World Record Day." Whereas the nationwide school program JAM, Just a Minute, brings physical activity and health education to the classroom, is promoted and backed by leading groups such as First Lady Obama's Let's Move, the American Heart Association, the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, NFL Play 60, USDA, National PTA, NBA, FIT, Discovery Education's Energy Balance 101, NASP, the largest group providing physical activity resources to teachers across America, plus hundreds of state and local groups and organizations with health and wellness initiatives. And whereas Frank R. Conwell PS3 Tigers has implemented daily jammers, including one-minute exercises along with weekly versions of exercise and play before the bell, also known as Hound TGI Mat PS3, where students arrive to school on Monday at 8:10 a.m. and work out with Principal Michael. And whereas the JAM World Record Day's purpose is to have as many children and adults around the world to simultaneously take time from their busy lives to participate in a one-minute exercise event. And whereas it is PS3's mission to recruit and encourage as many residents as possible to register with www.jamworldrecord.org and pledge to join the PS #3 Tigers for the third annual JAM Day for the JAM World Record on Thursday, February 12, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Jersey City does hereby recognize Frank R. Conwell PS3 Tigers in their dedication to making health and fitness a lifelong daily habit and by being active in promoting JAM World Record Day.
Before we continue, we just want to take a vote on it so then we can proceed. On the resolution, 10Z10, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President LaVaro.
Congratulations and aye.
We have a 9-0 vote, unanimous approval of 10Z10.
Now, this time, if you would kindly join us and also stay up in your seats.
Can you just state your name for the record?
My name is Eric Paul Prissel, proud principal of JAM World Record.
Hand. Hand.
All right, let's go. Ready, set, go. Hands up, left, one, left, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Daddy, daddy, you're sweating.
I am. 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 That was awesome. What a workout. That was awesome. Yeah. Look at Jeremy, you're sweating. This is something that we should consider before every meeting. What do you think? We need the principal here and the rest of the JAM people, though.
Hey, Michael Youngsey gonna be quiet tonight now.
Want to bring him back?
Yeah, I sent all the manager already.
Can we have everybody back so we can take a picture?
Yeah. All right, let's go.
Every council minute rated every now and once.
No way.
Yep, we are. We're gonna have a song.
I was joking. Yeah, exactly. More like The Shining, you know? Oh, yeah, 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 this one, this one. An airspeed. He's last. Look, tell him he's number 41. And so is Tyrone Benjamin, 40. Juan. Make sure you write down. Thank you for everything. Just for the record, I don't know if I had a camera on me, but Robert needs to know that I did that.
I like.
Watching for streets.
Yeah.
Eddie was swimming. Eddie was swimming. Rich couldn't move.
Okay.
Rich, you can't bust a move for the life of you.
Excellent. When you get there, then... Okay, onto our regular order of business, onto our first reading ordinances. Item 3A, City Ordinance 15-012, an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article 5, Office of the City Clerk to Include 3-39 Standards for Naming Streets and Municipality Owned Property, and Chapter 296 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6, Street Name Changes, repealing Section 296-19 in its entirety. Item 3B, City Ordinance 15-013 has been withdrawn. Item 3C, City Ordinance 15-014, it's an ordinance of the municipal council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Colgate Redevelopment Plan to alter the height and open space of Block 14-507 and make minor design and regulation changes. Item 3D, City Ordinance 15-015, an ordinance granting permission to Willow Avenue Realty Associates, LP, and its successors and assigns to improve and use approximately 5-foot-by-10-foot portion of the public right-of-way between the 60-foot right-of-way adjacent to Morgan Street and Lot 9, Block 13002, on the official tax assessment map of the City of Jersey City, for construction of a six-step stoop entrance stairway which encroaches 5 feet onto the public right-of-way along Morgan Street, which is a franchise ordinance. Item 3E, City Ordinance 15-016 has been withdrawn. Item 3F, City Ordinance 15-017, an ordinance amending Chapter 175 Food Handling Establishments, Article 3, Food Establishments, to create standards for farmers' markets. Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article 9, Department of Public Works, Section 71, Division of Park Maintenance, to amend the approved process for farmer's markets seeking permission to operate in city parks. Chapter 239 Parks, Section 15, Hours of Operation, permits farmers' markets to create standards for farmers' markets operating in city parks, and Chapter 160, Fees and Charges, Section P, Chapter 175 Food Handling Establishments, to create a fee for farmers' markets. Items 3F, excuse me, items 3A through 3F with the exception of 3B and 3E which have been withdrawn, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Young.
Aye for introduction, but 3D, and I appreciate the corporate and council gentlemen and their team to review that they are liable to cover $2 million over the 99 years, what are they called, years, is, I forgot. What was it?
Adjusted for inflation.
Jeremy, on the mic, please. Sorry.
Inflation adjustment.
Yeah. You wanted an inflation adjustment, and we did speak with the risk manager already about that, and you'll see that there's a replacement ordinance in there, and you'll see on the replacement cover sheet.
Yes.
That we identified that the language or in such type as the city risk manager during the term of his franchise. So what that does is it allows the risk manager to adjust it once he feels that the amount is no longer appropriate, given increased costs.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you for the, actually, you protect each of city and the taxpayer, really appreciate. And F, I would say Human Services Department did a great job, brought all the stakeholders together to some ordinance, some, every party's have to agree, and the happy is that.
Excuse me, can we close? Can we close that back door, please?
You cannot hear, right?
Can you just repeat, councilman?
Can't you hear me?
That's better.
It's better, right? Okay, I vote aye.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Tsché. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Council President LaVaro.
Aye for introduction.
City ordinances 3A through 3F with the exception of 3B and 3E which were withdrawn are introduced 9-0. Onto our second reading ordinances. First second reading ordinance is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article 3, Mayor, and Article 12, Department of Health and Human Services of the City of Jersey City Municipal Code, to move this Office of Senior Affairs to the Department of Health and Human Services. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Councilperson Osborne, seconded by Councilperson Waterman. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing carries 9-0. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-005, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
City Ordinance 15-005 is adopted 9-0. Onto our second, second reading ordinance, item 4B, City Ordinance 15-006, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of city-owned property located at 362 Summit Avenue within the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment area to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne, to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-006, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Whoa. Councilperson Young.
I think Richie Bujan, Councilman Richie, would not finish yet.
Okay.
He's finished. You finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilperson Young.
No, there are 65 units building at their location without parking. I cannot accept. That area already parking issue, but through this project, 65 units gonna make worse in the parking situation. So I vote no.
Okay.
Shaun.
Yes.
No, Shaun, I got interrupted by something on the...
Okay. So you're changing your vote to no? Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
I vote aye.
City Ordinance 15-06 is adopted 7-2 with Councilmembers Bajana and Young voting no. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item 4E, City Ordinance 15-009, an ordinance authorizing the cancellation and reimbursement of taxes pursuant to NJSA 54, semicolon, 4-3, 6C, for property owned by Margaret Anna Kuzak Care Center, Inc., and located at 251 Baldwin Avenue on Block 09606, Lot 8. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion. Second.
Second.
All right, on that motion, I'm gonna give it to Council President LaVaro, and I'm gonna give the second to Councilperson Osborne.
Yeah, she on top tonight.
On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-009, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
City Ordinance 15-009 is adopted 9-0. Onto our last second reading ordinance, is an ordinance authorizing, excuse me, an ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40A, semicolon, 21-1, Exec, and Section 304-12 of the Municipal Code for the property designated as Block 19006, Lot 33, on a city tax map and more commonly known by street address of 372 Pacific Avenue. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Council President LaVaro, seconded by Councilperson Osborne, I'm giving it to the loudest. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing carries 9-0 for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-011, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
City Ordinance 15-011 is adopted 9-0. Onto our favorite portion of the meeting is the public speaking portion. As you can see, in front of the podium, you will see a clock that has five minutes. We will be keeping strict law to that, so once you hear the buzzer, you are done. With that being said, first speaker, Laverne Washington. And I will not start the clock until you start speaking. You have five minutes. Okay? You ready? You on the clock?
So, I'm asking you to move forward, and we have a very sick, very much, so please mark this time because it was reported that on January 2014, the officer had a bad injury to the 2,000, compared to the 2,000. And we had asked for a review and said, "Our citizens, while this officer has taken place, allowed to own our sheets."
I know.
While this officer allowed to stop, frisk, and murder, the gun man. Also, while this officer, so many years, gave to mental suppress, oppress, and hurt the good laws, lack of our people in these communities. So, maybe some of the problems that happened throughout this city is that our people, all our young people, who have been a citizen, solid, and I can't even choose a protest initiative, and I will always serve in this city. Because to be here, to be here, to be here, to be here, and these jobs for our people, our youth, we need to raise our position, and I don't know who raised our position when I did, and the way we focus on our, to the money, and after the votes, on that part matter, in this community. And that's something that we could change, and we just go, "Oh, bless this earth." So, you all, we need to move on to that, and you start paying attention to what's happening to our young, proud, and black men in Jersey City, and I don't know what happened in Jersey City. So, I think we need to, 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 to,
I, 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 we typically don't allow time to be traded or, um, well, I say typically we don't.
I, I, yes.
Yeah, so, um...
If you have a power, as a senior, which is that it all back, you're a officer, you can be.
Excuse me? You know, just as a normal practice, we're not allowed to trade time. If you wanna be on the speakers list, we're on the speakers list out of a balance of respect for the speakers that spoke, we let them do that, uh, this one's time, but really it's not a practice we should allow or create a precedent for.
Okay.
Okay.
But I know that focusing on that, and also, it's really that we're getting a good job to, to afford the lives of Jersey City, I want to set that our young people do not have enough jobs, opportunities, opportunities in this city, I'm in these communities, I feel that all of you feel those construction jobs, and now it's time for me to hold the weight of my priority, a great priority to Jersey City. I'm gonna have to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson, did you wanna?
I'm looking for my aide right now.
Sir?
This is, sir, I, I'm looking for my aide right now. Um, can you step over here and I'll talk to you for a second? Um, I'm the councilwoman for Ward F, and some of it is in Ward F, a lot of it is in Ward B and A. However, I would like to sit down and talk to you and see if we can come up with, uh, some suggestions about what can be done, okay?
I also, just also, in Ward F, I have two relatives that live, but they did four months in, they shot in Ward F, one of them tried to make it better, who's about thirty-two years old, he got shot in Ward F, and I've got him shot in Ward F, and I watched the house, and I was very angry.
Well, I'm the councilwoman, I've lived in Ward F for sixty-seven years, and I've watched the change of times both ways, so maybe we can sit down together and figure out a way that, uh, the community and myself can implement something that might make things a little better, okay?
I would speak for this, so I'm sorry, please.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Sean, going forward...
Say again?
Going forward...
Yes.
And, and sir, your, your message is so important, so didn't want to interrupt that, but, uh, uh, the speakers have to be signed up, uh, prior to speaking? Okay.
His name is on the list?
No, we, we don't share time. Laverne, we don't share time. It's a, well, uh, this council is not, hasn't done it since, this council hasn't done it, and we're gonna hold by that rule. We're moving on.
Moving on. Next speaker, Stacy Jackson. Not here, okay? Notura Porter?
Notura.
Notura, I'm so sorry. Notura Porter? Not here?
Here.
Jamie Vasquez?
Not here.
No? Roberto Valentine? No? He's here?
Well, he missed us, okay.
He's here?
Roberto Valentine.
Roberto Valentine? Okay. Go ahead. Mr. Valentine?
Can you speak directly into the microphone?
Bring the mic down to you, there you go. Much better.
I was not to see this speaker as well as, uh, after I before you could see him, and he was, 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 he was,
Let me just explain that I had this conversation with you over the phone. I actually cut my vacation short to come back to make sure this item got pulled from the agendas, planning. And I set up a meeting which is gonna take place, uh, March 7th. It's gonna take place at the Hangar Center from 12 because they have yoga class in the morning, 12 to 2. I approved, I did a letter today which is gonna go out to all the residential in the historic district. It's gonna say the date of the meeting in Hangar Center, the date that the item will be on the agenda on the planning board, and a link to the website that you could go and review all the documents. So I got that done, and I could say I replied to over 100 email and 67 phone calls when I was on vacation. And I cut my vacation short just to make sure this issue got handled.
Daniel, Daniel, hold on, Mr. Cicati, hold on. Have you been in touch with Patrick Finn? Well, call me tomorrow, I'll give you his number, he's got a group over in Bergen area that's fighting this. I've been involved with him for the last month. Get ahold of me, I'll give you his number, get involved with Patrick Finn. Okay, next public speaker, Martin Terrado? Terrado? Sorry. This one, Martin Terrado.
He's next in line.
the speakers moving. Next speaker, Keith Twyman? If you could speak directly into the...
My name is Michael Harris. I have a life more than a city. I see politicians coming and going in the city, some of them, some of that, and whatever the best situation that I can bear. And although I have an old daddy, he very much loved me, but no one spent a half a year or two, and the racism, the racism is just... And if it's too disgusting to allow someone to put out that title of power for the love of a man who wore a gun to the world. I would not start a revolution without a choice. Getting the haircuts, the kids, the rap school, bad standing in front of these people, just doing so many things that so many other politicians, more than they know. Then it goes to Jersey City, and everybody goes to the Democratic Party. The world of the city, the world of the communities, for 20 over 20 years, starting with the world of identity, with myself apart. And even that, it's just so much camaraderie, and so much companionship and friendship, and you just build life for friends through that, and that is a part of the movement. And he's taking that, and brought it to the council, to the city, and for no one to investigate it, he will take it back. I don't know that it's not being investigated, but I do, I will say this, that being that what now should be brought to the forefront, ain't like it's taking the front. I'm serious, for the flag, I'm serious, because I'm fortunate, and this is not a feeling I have. If this was anything you said there, you might have started again, and put out this title of president, and it's not a feeling I have. So, I'm here, and I'm telling, and I'm telling, and I'm telling every sign of the old risks, and I think that it's a shame if someone is another...
Michael, Michael Harris, Michael Harris. Okay, if the, as each speaker, if you've seen the list, if you're next up, if you make your way up to the front, that way we can continue to move the speaker list. We have a long speaker list, folks, it's over, well over 50 people as I understand it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Harris. I'm a firefighter, here in Jersey City. And I'm here, which is, of course, a man who's... My son, that's where, oh, he, I had a year fight, to try to save the life. My son, in the end, gave my son a little heart. Don't be close to the guy, I seen a boy, he was... I have all the secrets, Jersey City, lived in Jersey City all my life. I keep my head, see the house, um, to... I don't know who else person, who went, I see, I have a team, I have a team, came over, I had a year, yeah. He come through, the cold, he goes to the funeral. He never, he had a car, our bases, he had a scandal, he was able, he had brothers, and a lot of money. This man took his time, he come down to my house, sent my wife with my son's name on the street sign. Came to my house to put my son's name, and sent my wife, something to visit. Who said he said, "I assist, trust me." I am the African American, he is, he's bad, and then, to find out, to get my heart, not be in particular. Oh, you, I don't know why, I am that guy, that one who believed and died for this community, made eighteen, who is about my construction. I am that guy that stopped the union, not my, my, my liberals, not reading. I am that guy that first beat out the American union, you know, people, I am that guy that died for what goes to, it's a shame that all those who come to Jersey City, and not one person in that lap, they go construction, that's only one person, a city for three million dollars, it's a shame that we don't have any of this, and even better, it's time to get that happen for us. We know exactly how that happened, I don't know how, I didn't, I see, well, that person that counted, uh, you gotta be, you gotta be... You gotta be, this is counted, on consequence, consequence, well...
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up, sir. Angela? Not here. Jennifer Colazo? If, if you're coming up to speak, if you're anticipating being speaker, if you can come up to the first row, and that way we can get you right up. Thank you, Angela. Jennifer.
My name is Nick, speaking of this race, that has been put upon the ground of recreation by the citizens of Jersey City. And the lack of progress, especially by children, that we have, for us. I have fought in my own, for the union, so I know what it is to be created. We have no state or state programs, or others, no Jersey City, our champions, no man, whatever that's running for office, have I ever had Jersey City's local programs? How else know? Why I have to care, why I have to go to the town to see such programs now? Maybe on the other way, or the other, run, we have local programs, instead of downtown area, and then it's called program that you have, and you have a team, and it's not good that this program that you have, for the team, is the one that we want. What happens to the rest of the city, is it moved that I have a job in recreation, or for the state, or the city? Right, so that, it comes in with the truth, fact, that it's related to the general system, that we should, and every time we turn around, there is an order, the situation, and we are as, as the city, as the city. As resident of the city, I have a, my community, both of the courses, both, in which we send a point of concern to us, but that I have a reservation, normally, that it shows us that the owner of the park, our total position, position of that, to help those, of you as citizens, or me, or who, where's the economy? I agree, I see, on behalf of many, when I say that I do, because we need to, by the mayor, by the council members, and our partners, the commissioner, who continues to judge, has clearly shown us, he has no lack of community leadership, but actually has taken me, free, safer, and no one, not a bear, sitting on council members, or on you, has set forth a record for all that has to rest, to the Department of Recreation, for our local city, why? There are two kind of people, those who seek ways to improve the current condition, and those who have been none, who are in transition, which are trying to see how it works.
Philip Carrington? Philip Carrington? Not here?
No.
Okay. Bruce Austin?
Good evening. I ask you, brother, what I want to do, is to save the city, and you can see inside of the people, the people that are destroying the land. If you want to protect, what I want to say is, I can ask anyone in the public, come to the party. Anyone who says you're part of it, anyone who hold the party, two decisions stands up, and the justice happens, and the day happens, and the time happens, and the other law, we can hear from you.
Bruce, 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 if you could just back up a little bit, there you go. Thank you, sir.
Think that we have a post, or, how we have two rights to govern, we have a legislative right, which is you, we have a executive right, which is meaningful, and we have a judicial right. Who will be taking it, I can call a race, and I'll say that this situation, and all that is under recreation, is illegal. Come on, I'm giving you permission to start a run, and I'm proud of this. You guys know who's going to run, follow me, follow the direction of who is relevant to the law, in the Department of Recreation. Let's, let's see, let's see that transparent, city council, that is playing, that is working too many, when you run, when you not the one, when you are going to, you are going to the city, you say to the, and you mean straight down, that you represent them, you represent them. Then I need to tackle you, you know, how I'm gonna do, tackle? The amazing thing is, is that you have the Department of Recreation, was supporting the, of movie stuff. And who's going to go down there, uh, one of the great, that is, different, ethnicity, but this is, but you have, and it's playing movie stuff, I can't get it. Come on, this is really amazing, brother, this is bigger than any of you in order this council. What I thought I wanted is, is that the last time, for me, you kept your honor, you got to school, on the way, at the greatest school, you told them how, it was a war, you never even engaged into the office. But each generation of you, like you're tackling your own, what is really going on? Because it's like, within eight months, you've had three DVD copies, you've had three DVD copies, you've had two cheese sets, you have a pen and a bag that comes with the first two days, you have a city council that's gonna lead in the first eight months, so you're gonna have a new city council, where you, where you, she may be, you're gonna be...
Ah, nice, nice.
But, let me tell you a quick story. Some control, because, public opinion, you're worse than the last one. That's your public opinion, right? Now, you know, but, I, I respect them, but let them know, that situation down there, that I can go off now, do not destroy the people of this, of this city, and let them believe that that toxic queen of, it is not being taken care of, because that's what I'm telling you, right next door, is very likely to fall, if that queen of was being in the government, while the mayor, houses, or people before, that have, that have fought before, been in the fall. Explain that to them, people, somebody about a toxic queen, it's a doctor, that, it has nothing to do about DVD copies, they're still doing it to them. The last administration has 600 million dollars of credit, and now we're going to position this on, getting a budget, I want you, keep doing what you do, because it's important.
Bensia? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't see you, buddy.
I have a problem, um, this is the idea of all this, I was about eight and a half years, I don't know what I have, but this is not a legal issue, this is an approaching, I have lived in Jersey City for about 15 years, and I saw that, and I saw that article, and I was trying to, the whole hand, and asked him, because, I mean, this is a crazy situation, Danny is after, that, 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 the decision, did he know, did he not know the vulnerability, Jackie Robinson, they, and it's not racist, and he'll put that out, come out, and basically, and he loves it.
Brian Mills?
Next.
Brian Mills? Not here? Derek? Brett, what's that?
No.
Derek's not here either? Peter Barnes?
Here.
This is God, this is not racist. I think everybody needs to register with that, from how I know, from each other's person. Why is this a witch? Only one way to get that, is you have to know that, I'm a pill. This is the way you follow up, we're not awake, not on our dead, for God, you know, nobody, 'cause that was the same here, my brother, this butcher's been out of my hair. Why? This is not a tip, this is not, everybody is paying. Wow, oh, you suck, this is racist, God. Everybody, you know? Nobody got free, God, not free, I don't know what's going on, I'm not a rap, I'm not shit, I can tell you I love you, y'all don't racist, nobody got no racist, this is no one's serving God, you know what's serving God? 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 You have to change, you have a window, which you need, I'm a pill, you need to change, I'm a pill, yes, so, all trouble, you're a pill, I'm a pill, I'm a pill, I came out of prison for 15 years, yeah, I changed, nobody changed, I changed, because the situation that I hope my son, and the boy, and the girl, I made all choices, so I take care of my brothers, I came out of prison, the top, to get God, to get me to God, I had 18 people, who not changed, it's young, I tell you, nobody, as a student, you, I'm a pill, you know? I'm a pill, 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 why, and it's money, 'cause somebody like that, that's going, why? Everybody sit up, and then, and you don't know what's going on, the fight, in the street, the fight is behind the scenes, y'all, I choose process, you kill yourself, you gotta just shut up, and bring the change, that's what we're going, y'all, we didn't go, y'all, still not here. Future, y'all, change, fighting, fight, in Jersey City. You're a little too bad, you're a little too bad, y'all, they not changing, God, don't bless mess, how many y'all gave mess, like, I don't know, I would bet anyone, y'all suit, in my league, y'all from the coast, we in the street, so if y'all didn't come to us, to find out what's going on without you, y'all, y'all, it's a waste, 'cause y'all don't know what you're thinking, that's why you come out, so if you do come out, y'all just relax, get old, that's it, I'm through y'all, city, bro.
Yeah, I agree.
It's all the city, man. You gotta stay in your own business, you can't get personal, with the, in, 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 that's why I'm not being, that's what you want, 'cause y'all business, money, I'm not singing, and it's saving y'all too much time, so who in the world, gonna got y'all, you know y'all killing myself, 'cause it's all for you.
That's right.
See, you're fine, we did that, we worked you, from yesterday, I come about the fair, I come about the drop, you know about, 'cause y'all pick a tune, to get a job, for me, I want you, nobody working hard for me, in Jersey City, how many of you didn't tell what you do, like, and you don't see what's going on? I see everything, I'm witness, I'm a witness, why my mother's happening, that's why, I can't, y'all, I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, like, people don't change, I believe I said, and change, I believe in city, so if y'all never help me, who I will, 'cause if that is me, the first day, that man, that's not coming, y'all, I'm beating you guys, y'all, I'm beating you guys. I'm a big, big, y'all, I'm a big dog, man, I'm a big, big, the biggest street, tired, y'all mind, y'all not cool, just for who's saying, by the way, listen, y'all, y'all is here, before me, so how can this be, for us, bro, take your bullets?
Your time is up, sir.
Where, nothing's happening, y'all, wow, we're trying to, I don't know.
Sir, your time is up.
I want to thank you, y'all, I'm a student, I'm a student.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Okay, folks. Andrew Di Matteo?
Hold on, hold on, before we proceed, um, so, is that clock working? I didn't hear the bell go off. Did the alarm go off? Is that clock working, Sean?
We didn't hear it, because they were...
Okay, so, Sean? Sean, just so we're not, can you just keep track of the time, please?
I will.
On this, secondly, secondly, I think, can speak for the rest of the council on this, that we, none of the members of the council think Daniel Rivera is a racist at all, um, in fact, he's a generous and, and giving man, as all of you have said. What I, what I do wanna say, yeah, and I want the other council people respond before other people speak as well, um, but I, I wanna speak directly to what Mr. Barnes said, um, if I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barnes, but I believe you have a couple of contracts with the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency on some work doing with the city.
I send it to every single developer.
Yeah, so, um, I think, no, your time is up, Mr. Barnes, we can talk about it later, but your time is up.
You had, you had your five minutes?
We don't, I, I think I can say for myself, I'm not gonna take here slings and arrows that are unfounded, um, completely unfounded, because I know that I've sat on that Jersey City Redevelopment Agency and approved the, uh, the resolutions and the contracts that have appropriated money, um, and, to you. and approved the, uh, the resolutions and the contracts that have appropriated money, um, and to you.
And I send your name to every single developer and CCU too.
Your time is up. We have to move on with our conversation. If you want to talk some more, we'll talk after the meeting. Uh, we can schedule a time to talk, okay?
Andrew Dean Mateo? Pat Le- Le Greg? I don't know if I'm pronouncing his last name correctly. Lanier? Legear? Legear? Not here. Gilbert Moore? He's here.
We, um, um, I was like, say, uh, Mr. L. Myself, my shame, I love that he not be hosting. I knew you for 20 years. You worked for us and everything. Um, kind of talking that stuff. I'm not like that. And that's not even so hard for you. Um, you know, get back to it, you know, just a warm change. It seems that, you know, you guys always want Jersey City, my man Jersey City better. But I guess Jersey City contract with this small man in the club. He wants, he wants, he wants a part in the ball. For you. If we want to Jersey City better, y'all, 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 y'all. But we see that the developers that you got out here giving the 35% of your data to some chat and another game. You know why I feel that's nasty? And it's sad that they have these issues with some, and they don't even know who we are. That's sad. And, and, and I know who I'm serving. It isn't the first time that she and her is checking you on the process. We don't know who counts for whatever. I think I don't count for whatever this is, or because you're helping the boy that walks through. But, um, you know, we have a relationship with the region. And you know, from what I think, I'm hearing. And, uh, you know, some of the people get a job and want to, or somebody is looking for that. Ryan, he doesn't bother. He doesn't even hold it in the room. And recreation matter. All these jobs were working Wall Street at a time. So if, if, if it didn't go into the audience. If you count the top 10, the top 10, you go, you don't get a job. It's about anything that I own it. He didn't ask me. But you know, so when somebody starts talking about rare life issues and he doesn't really cover it, that a person who's doing wrong, the person getting on there is talking. And it has to do color. If you're pouring a, a magazine, if you're not managing your skills right, it doesn't matter if it's black, white, green, Asian, it's bad. You know, you can go somewhere. And if you guys, I'm gonna have to go, you guys are pulling in in this position. You guys are making this person decision.
All of us.
You guys stop there. And if it's all the time. So what are we gonna do to make it easier on you? Like, what are we gonna do? Just follow that change, you see?
Do what?
It's not, you said, when you was in the recreation world. How, how would a job in the recreation world, if you're a mom and a stepdad, which was which is essentially to leave, uh, Jersey City as a period of, okay, we're going to the recreation. Wow. How many jobs are out there? When you're running the department, you're gonna get a city, you're gonna get a phone to call you. You're owed a recreation law. And check out the people, the job that you got there, the people that work. You know how people that work is 70,000 times the amount you 40,000 a day? I don't even owe you this little problem. Because we didn't know what's going on. Because I put out my life. If I'm working on the last day, I don't want to stop the world.
Right.
But we have to stop putting our work, our job in Jersey City, stopping it to the people in New York, stopping it to the people in the country. People just see you harder. You guys set a chain, bro. That's not a word. You go set a chain, give your job style for the property. What about the property? What about the tradition? We're not the one. We're not the one who. What was not just like us? That guarantee? If I'm giving you, give you guys a part, you won't get it. For me. And I go for a fact. Two, who I gave you streets, which is you know, if this is a remember. And I see rich all the time, I give you this decision. Everybody knows I'm here. And I'm not finding a way to.
I just heard it. David Henry?
Jerry, you're standing. To me, you pay, to do a person's promotion. He's not the racist at all. He's a beautiful person to be about. You racist or being racist, that isn't his problem. What I'm gonna talk about is you and the recreation. So we have a lot of my own who just seem to kill us, block it, get us all to that. All that exercise from the land, you know what I'm doing? Open the membership, everything is totally here. The recreation system is learning how to go before. It's actually everybody, that's talking, I'm getting started with the show. They do, it's out there. And they have another video. It's still on my mind. My wife is so good, so good. And so, and we talk about. So the recreation is required. It wasn't even a house, a man. It's a whole people, or it's a house, or it's a person. We don't want that, so we're gonna be required. And getting around the biggest problem. I was talking about the city, and that is a fact, that's what I'm telling you. And we have to go with the law, to, for you. To be there, so I don't worry about that. That's the basic message to you. And I beg this man, which is very representative of that. You hear it? I don't know what to say, that's what I can say.
Thank you. Steve Hyman? Steve Hyman, Steve Hyman?
Steve Hyman? Steve Hyman's here for, for Danny too.
Hey, I have a question. Whenever there's an Indian or a black person or a non white person that needs help, can they call me? I want to share. I have to share what I'm about, what I'm handling. Do I, am I aware? Because I'm trying to get people to recognize the fact that the people in this party don't take about from New York. It's not about money. It's about Jersey City.
And I put Steve Foll, Mark Alms. I put notes in the morning yesterday to do a read on what he had selected for reading. From back, you know, quotes, because it is beginning doesn't work out. He said, I think he's an honest person, maybe. That there will not be a heart or a rail going on the ground. That the man in the boat should not be happy about that. But that's the best case, because that company is worth more money than all the work that... And when you work out, there's a lot of people behind me that want to go to the docks and have money. Just with the amount of money the city has wasted, not allowing mom and father to go through. Being an uncle, I still have the money. And this is all of course, the time that has been in the world happened. It was a million six in the board of companies. It was thirty thousand dollars a year among the poor. I can't imagine on a six three, that it's not even love, but see full, won't allow it to happen. It will happen now. Everything becomes darker. Everything, everything fails in the air. It will happen, because it doesn't give any chance to let the city fall. I'm, I'm, I'm just goes to the future. I'm not very worried, because I've run from the river last time. And in the end, we run from the river, I hope, we can go down, run to the council, I hope. Run down, run to the council. I hope that's the way to go, run to the council. Because I don't know, I hope we can get out of the city.
Which side you are on? You help me and my opponent.
In the same election.
We, I thought I was thinking that, it's really interesting, you know, most of you are in the house. Nobody listens, honestly, you got a whole wall of voices.
Walk off.
I mean, I don't understand, but I don't care, I probably got a word from the youth, right?
Time is up. Thank you. Next, Steve Pickney. Come on up, Steve.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
And we should remember from our statement by saying that I have absolutely no intention to what a counselor and a director are doing to negotiate. And quite sure that Danny stood up as people and had a job to do. And we're all here today, and we're all, you guys have a thousand reasons, people can do the same better. It's nothing to do with the sun. But for that fire to be published in front of the Jersey general. Put a cloud over somebody, now, I haven't interviewed about you in the past, and I have never met such a following person. This guy is a Marine, you would know, Hura. This guy is Doc, you would know. This guy helps people by, by, by spending twenty-five years' life on a golf game. This guy goes and deals with all the bills, all the need, all the trouble. So, I'm with him, because they aren't very smart people, I live in Jersey City all my life. And I have met a lot of wrong people, I have met a lot of wrong people. You bring it, brother. And what I believe is that for your children, because I go to another university, and I probably only spend just like maybe half of a half, one percent of those people that are there dealing with issues of office. They always have, when we were running for office, and I lived on the street at a fundraiser. And, you know, it was last Sunday, and I called you, and you put a child on the right. And I got to ask you, and you spoke to my heart to people about what you read, about Christian love. And people can go there, and anytime, in any place, you need to be anywhere, in any community, to be who you are. And to be like the law, what you talk, what you read, what you, I mean, because it's just that I do. And I don't, I don't just worry, but I can, I can build a crew, and I need to. Uh, so this is not necessarily nice, 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 this is real, this is about somebody who's real. And, you know, I have seen you, I have seen you being somebody who changes his soul, everything has happened around you. Because you care about them, you care about them, you care about me. You got a son going, and the military worried about you, that Bill is in demand, and it's worried about the patriots. You got all this on your shoulders, and some are just focused on those, ah, things. And still, after three months tomorrow, you stand up, you know what you had. You didn't have a shot, you didn't yell, you didn't hit this hole?
No.
The room tells you, leave your thing up. You know, you know, this is, this is not a problem, and I just thought, so proud. Everything bad become good, and it's a big redemption. Think about it. What's gonna happen, how are we gonna bring you good, if people like this can come out and use the floor? Because some guys is throwing you away. Stay strong, you know?
David, close me? Close me? Thank you.
Good evening.
Um, this all was a time in two weeks, um, in the agency, in hospital, working hard, and, uh, working.
David, if you'd just mind just raising the mic a little bit toward you?
Um, I'm real sure that, um, came I asked you, and it's really long, you know, the problem. Um, those people that are talking, all the constables are talking, they are talking to you, um, that even showed that you have tried to handle it. And in Jersey City, I have never seen hospital work like this. I have coworkers, and it's not going to be easy, you know, it's tough. And I came over there, and I think it's worked, and someone was talking to me.
I'm gonna have to come up with something to see that bomb. I have to do it on a song. We'll come up with a plan.
Uh, first, I have counsel for, uh, the city. Um, I have spoken to the city's mayor, he's a senior, he's a seven, or eight, four, five, four. He said, going to your manifestation to our C5, which happened in June. Really awesome, that somebody you know is a great person. And always here, and a person of integrity, and a person who did, and a person who's two souls, alright? But that's something to do, you see the person. And, and it's my show to the whole speakers today, right? And I defend, I must say, one person coming up here, as Terrence enough, said, in the fight. At least I feel like I was a new friend.
Mr. Hogan, can you step back a little bit?
I was a new friend, and then I was changed, and then I'm a friend, things like that. Not that it's right, but it's true, sorry, I was talking about that, counsel, and also being accused of racism. Racism means several speaks out of the book, a lot, a strategy, a lot. And, right? And it's really, really upsetting, and it's happened, because people will read and believe. And not only the people, but the people who are putting out, and they don't have the courage to put their name on. Pretty bad. Pretty, pretty, a serious attack that's something that deserves. Now, this is a distraction, I'm gonna change the word, that if you don't love history, history will repeat itself. Well, you go back to Salem, which, well, you go back to the church of coffee, or a church, right? And then one of those people, oh, stop it, you should return it, right? The church of coffee just threw out accusations of people being communist. Most people who worked, and something wrong with being communist. And what happens, the church of coffee find, they found that there was no true people in the church, most of these accusations. There is no true people in this accusation. Now, the church of coffee, it's only fifteen years ago, it's only sixteen years ago. And it's on a small scale, you can say, but in, in his era, it hurt, and then really injured thousands of people. That lost in the dark, that couldn't work in movies, that couldn't write, uh, beat street riders. And it was true, and it only ended. And that was happening in Jersey City, with someone I know, that, oh, he's a racist, he's a liberal racist, that's a real racist. I'm a significant racist. I don't know, but I know he is. So, that's all I want to say, or thank you, I said, and I do owe to you some water, and I have a little heart, because I appreciate all of you for this, our history. But we really, 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 we are one full sanitation, you know? Thank you.
We, um, the clerk inadvertently skipped Speaker Aurelius Ingram. Aurelius Ingram? My apologies for that. Aurelius is not here? Okay. Jason Berg? Not here? Keep going. Okay. Her tense, her, her Tensia Peterson? I hope I'm not butchering the name. Tensia Peterson.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Peterson. My nephew, a contemporary, is murdered by NYPD, November twenty, twenty-fourth. My nephew was not connected or involved in the city. Um, he actually still, uh, goes to Tali, not only New York City, but also Jersey City. June twenty-fourteen, the law pick was murdered by lots of, uh, uh, bodies. Okay, it took seven and a half months, but first of all, his name to be revealed to the body. Now, my passion is, what was going on here? What would you do, is it because of a color? Our black man, our sons, our nephew, are being murdered, daily, not only Jersey City, but all over. Is it a crime to walk out of the city? Is it a crime for you to just say, ah? Is it a crime when our children are being murdered? Is it a crime because we are black? Spanish, brown? Is it a crime for all that we want is human seed? Here in Jersey City, I know, sir, for nineteen and a half years, and it's sad, here is the guy where this officer has numerous, twenty-month-plus, excessive force on him, and he's still wearing a uniform, where is the justice? Not only for families that have walls and alarms, but for mothers, for fathers. Where is the justice for these activities, for all of us? Saying the law is their own hand, and murdering our children. Whatever was going to be our children, going to be our too. It doesn't hurt, because it doesn't affect your eyes and necks. But sooner or later, when the council's someone on the floor, that person is trying to make sure that everyone who knows this now, uh, Latin or white part, is a systemic admission that is going through all police department, through this whole entire country. When are you guys, you guys, the ones that we have impacted? When are you guys to step up and say, allow everybody, whatever is black, brown, blue? No matter what color, it's worth living, it's worth saving. When are you guys going to wake up? When in Jersey City, y'all to wake up? When it goes to a speaker that we have placed to make decisions, not only for our safety, but for our parents? When are you guys going to wake up, Mr. President? Please, please, I thank you.
Omar Sabado? Lamar? Arnold Williams? Oh, Omar, great.
Good evening, Omar.
Good evening.
I'm just a little frustrated, I'm, uh, getting my hours, uh, this afternoon, tonight, I have choices for our race. Unfortunately, it is a sad, yet good day for us. I say it's sad day, because a leader who don't have involvement in such a disgusting, and offensive, being racist. And that accusation is not connected with the poor council in the river. Councilor Rego has given years of hard work to any kind of positive lies of our youth. Uh, Councilor Rego has never looked at race, has never looked at gender, he looked at moving in the job and who deserves it. Um, I gotta say, I was gonna say this, but I was tired for recreation last year in March, and we do, do great work. Um, also the assumption that I was gonna get, uh, yeah, two minutes of time, if I did certain things, which I unfortunately did, as, as a part. We conquered the goal, I was a member, con- contacting the dead. Um, I got so, uh, regretful, you know, to come back, you know, in few weeks, because it's not as busy. I have a degree in physical restriction, I have, uh, developing experience, I have professional experiences, which I, I did in Japan, and I have a degree. I got funding from grants, um, and who works and stuff, and, uh, I knew kids, I knew you, I know I knew, I know Jersey City, I was a part of the race. Yet, got two weeks, went to personal practice. Um, I might get you back, but, I mean, roads lost, they're gonna cross. We can get together, it's definitely a sad day in this city, because we can be born and raised in the same, same, same country, not the same color. What else would be a race, I don't know, like, black, white, we have fun, it was it. Now, in the city, it's becoming a black, white, Spanish, Chinese, it's sad, it's definitely a sad day in this city. Guys, um, two minutes, we're, uh, I'm trying to turn, uh, I'm gonna try to cut it short, I apologize.
Right, Omar? Continue.
Yes, yes, yes. I want to remind you now, just because I'm feeling with, uh, a little sadness, anger, um, that you can control, obviously. But it's just, just, uh, first of all, that is a city, a strong, solid city. We all set with our city being here, and it just happened, this, 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 it's, it's, it's really, really, this. All you guys are dependent, and it doesn't have to be long, it's really long. Then it has a lot of fear, that I'm tired, just now, it's a lot of, uh, regardless of race, whether it was finding, uh, finding, uh, the next move for it. Regardless of race, whether it was, uh, finding, uh, or maybe for a future that is possible, but maybe, maybe for a future that is equipped, because certain sports that are stored, it's, it's, it's long. Regardless of race, then, and I'm afraid, impact these lives, and I'm sure, maybe, you today, that are, that are adults, they can definitely test about who they are. Um, so, I'm sorry, uh, look at this, but sometime when you face this, this, uh, this murder, then again, like, and I, I need for this to be, to show me.
Omar?
Um, sorry, guys, I, I had to roll something, but I, uh, I didn't want to say this yet, but I will tell you, it's a time of very, very good times. Um, I told you, uh, I'll say that for another time, because I do a little reading at the time, and, counsel, my girl, I want to tell you, keep your head up. And continue serving for the community that you love, that you take very pride in, and you're good at all things.
Time is up, sir.
Show yourself.
Time is up, sir. Arnold Williams. Mary Cruz.
Oh, I love it. Please, my little sister. And I was looking at the comments, right? But when I heard, when I saw the article, I was totally saddened, and I was very upset. So, I decided, you know what, I'm speaking that. Um, I don't know Daniel, for sure, I'm hoping, but everything that I heard about Daniel, or babies that Daniel gave her, councilman Daniel gave her, uh, toy ball. Um, once, I remember a story when he was twenty-two, that my school, Spanish, or black children? Some, maybe, not many. Um, I thought this was a girl, and I said to him, we can't beat our children. He likes white children, black children, Spanish children, so, I said, I mean, I'm not racist, I'm not racist, I'm not racist, I'm not racist about racism. You can use the race bar. To be honest with you, um, these, whenever I have to go to, um, who does it say? Court House, first thing I say, on races, why don't we get out of there? I don't want to stir, I don't care about races. This is a girl, I don't know what you say, but I want every one of them.
Don't want to admit that on the record.
I want to say, I'm very ashamed, I don't want to say who was down here, but some of these threats, this judgment has a hard goal. One time, our school was so snow, I made a phone call, and I said this to the girl, our children went for, our parents, who are black? Who are Spanish? He made, he, this is a girl, he's helping, made sure our schools, so, made sure, when, when we had big homes on the board. Now, everybody knows the board is great. This is a girl, he made, made phone call, he made sure it's far, he came out himself. So, I'm gonna do this tonight, because when I heard that, I was, you can't say this to the girl. I come to know, we really need to apologize to this girl. So I'm going to do this tonight, because when I heard that, I can't say this is very, I've come to know, we really need to apologize this is very, this is very sad. I'm sitting there, I don't understand, it's not fair, but I see honestly from a heart, it's disgusting, we need to stop this and I don't want to go to the fight the whole time. And this is important because you come out, that's my idea, I think it's horrible. This is very, this is very, he coaches, but funny my ideas, why, who can this only have arms to be assigned to children? This is shameful, I'm embarrassed, just to be even with my best art, but I took this game true, but you know what, this is very, low weapon form, yes you should. I need to say that I'm fake, I'm so tired of that, I'm scared of this, and I had this kind of sadness, someone was standing there saying, oh Jesus, move this person, because no, I was just a student, so first, this is true, but like, this is very, he's a toy boy. I mean, I didn't think of, uh, hair, I had hair cutting, but what happened, I had my hair cut, so I don't think it's racist, but we need to stop this, and we're together, this is very, we love you, that's why we're here.
Thank you. Luis Masito Gonzalez. Councilman?
Yes.
Hello? Folks, folks, can we get some order?
Yes.
Before you proceed, um, Masito.
None of the council members believe that Daniel Rivera is a racist, I'm telling you now, he's a wonderful man, he's worked for the community, so they approve that, but Councilman Daniel Rivera and myself, we discussed one of the issue regarding for two thousand fourteen summer youth job. Now, they have an issue actually. Last year, they hire four hundred ten kids. From the four hundred ten kids, sixty-two percentage is black, I'd like to be a, and the mayor of Supremo writing the piece of paper. Twenty-four percent is Spanish, other is a seven percent, white is a two percent, Asian is one percent. Now, if you analyze by world, twenty-two, the twenty-four percent District A, nine percent from the District B, six percent from the C. My district only has a six percent, E District, which is Kansas Osborn, is eight percent, F has a forty-seven percent kids come from there. So actually, Daniel Rivera and myself, they have some issue. When we talk about job, we're looking for job equal opportunity, it should be not described by race. So when we look at all those numbers, that department has issue, that leadership has problem. So that's why I told the last council meeting, there was some issue that department, should be mayor of should be looking to that issue. If this issue not correct the problem, probably next council meeting, I put a resolution to demand change of leadership in that department. So please, one thing I know with the Jersey City is a beautiful city, we come from the all of the world, the people work so hard to support the family. And none of the council people has a race, it's not exist, I'm Korean, come from the far from here. So please, take away that kind of, you know, mentality. If we have a problem, some people use that race and try to get their own benefit. So please, there are only few people always cause problem, I hope peoples understand that fact, and we try to make sure that there's some change required that department.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez. Just, can you just back up a little bit from the mic, thank you.
I'm one of the fathers of the wonderful United Community, ladies, I'm a father of, former American, uh, he's a pastor, uh, in all of renovation. I found the community very pretty awesome, before I started in the Jersey City, and now we're ready, ready to get back from Jersey awesome. And don't forget to tell them, this is very bad, this man was everywhere, everywhere for you, he's so, he's so difficult. And I, this is shame, this is shame, um, I sit here and, you know, I know that we, we're very familiar with that, why, why would I go this, why? Okay, this is a part, a question, if I was to say, oh, who, who's doing it, who are you to be, just to make this matter, like, well, either this is not, I don't even see, this is shame, 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 this is shame. Well, either, okay, it's, please, please, we have access to your name.
What's that?
Danny.
I mean, folks, Danny, that's your call I guess, but, uh, yeah.
Danny, please, and we love you, this is what we love, and we also need a good second and love you, I love you. This is really the attitude that I'm with the person, person of the age, and I don't want to say it for the age, and I mean, also, I'm just trying to be a leader, so, I appreciate you, for the love of God, because I love you.
I'm just talking about, I'm from the world, home, this also, and I'm a respect for everyone else, um, I need to say this is a good time.
Chuck, can you get a little closer to the mic?
I need to say this is a lot of my heroes, I have a lot of heroes, I have a good daddy that I have a hero, but I'm going to say that, like, I do, I'm not saying something, but to his eyes, it's going to be a broken. If Danny Rivera was a fighter of the baseball team, he would be the world champion, if he was a singer, fighting with singers, he would be his favorite. If he was a boxer, fighting for his, his, he would be nominated, most important of my things is I, is one of the biggest, I said, the road ahead is never smooth, because of the life of the brother. I know my heart, and they do more than that, and I absolutely, absolutely know that Danny Alvarez, Danny loves, they do more than that, and you got to feel that, because we know you got all our.
Mathis Sharbus.
Hello, guys. Yes, this is Rivera. Um, first, just I have to say that, uh, yes, unfortunately, this situation began, uh, I'm known for a short period of time, I'm not known for this. However, um, this is, this is mad problems going on here with, uh, Recreation Department, seems that people hold this question. Being part of the process, uh, Mr. Shores is not here, and I just want to ask him. There was a bad process for hiring of all Southside kids, uh, because it was a new program instituted, it was a new day, people, it was going to all city residents, the children, youth, living from border to border, southern parts. The city looking for kids participating, about six hundred applications came in, and that's a pool that the city put. Every kid was hired in the Southside as applications on by the Recreation Department. The figure is that this young man concerned in the breakdown, to my understanding, that's not a true breakdown. Um, and I think that the four-day judges were made about Mr. Shores and the Recreation Department, and the other people who involved in the Southside hiring, because it was a committee, but there's just one person, one person, you just say, oh, we hired, we can't hire, we can't hire, I didn't know about that.
Matt, if I can just interrupt, so officially, are you here on behalf of Ryan Struthers?
No, no, no.
I just want to make sure, I want to make clear, okay.
That was more like, how the.
Okay, continue, continue.
Yeah, um, but what I'm saying is that, as four days inside, I know the process, um, and personally felt that Southside people providing, uh, very good service for the city. We endeavoured to do and enlist all the youth that wanted to participate, and we got quite a big pool of kids who wanted to participate, and that community who selected that, the kids, for example, African Americans, Hispanic Americans, white Americans, and they were basically from Recreation Department, so I am sorry, this is a struggle, but that's true in the community, um, I know you're playing this now, because he's legal, that's a problem, but it's just that's true in the community, just even that, to carry that, that it was a group people who sat down and interviewed the partners of the city, and a lot of kids, you know, part of Southside city. Um, furthermore, we start doing this as a ritual, it is a ritual, all citizens come to receive this, um, and it's unfortunate that people are taking it to that extent, because this is the city that all residents need to come together, and if you're fighting about jobs, and you got all this crime on the street. And a lot of us in the legal section of the city, and kids who were mostly, should have run for the Congress. And everybody had opportunities, and they didn't try to say, well, you're African American, you need a job, you're Hispanic American, you need a job, you're Latin American, you need a job, it was nothing like that. Um, I think that everybody, you just comment that, it's unfortunate that that's the city, you're always grabbing, you know, top front, you're a journalist, and I think that people came outside our city trying to, they didn't have a, I don't think that was insurance, I think it was people outside our city trying to spark some, uh, now, you know, well, I mean.
Folks, folks, let's not engage in a back. Matt? Wait, sir, Matt, I don't order, Matt, I don't order, Matt, sir, address the council, sir, sir, you have to address the council. Get back here. Your time is up, your time is up. Dawn Felton, folks, there's not going to be any, no outbursts, well, respect every speaker when they speak. Folks, Matt?
Matt?
Matt, enough, folks, respect every speaker when they speak, no outbursts, thank you. Dawn Felton, not here, Yvette Gattan? Yvette, can you speak into the microphone? Bring it to you. Got it.
Um, and when you're going to disturb, the reason I'm going to disturb is because with the exception of the laws that you need to pass around, we walk the streets together. Together, we have a major vision, I think it's very rude, it's very disrespectful, if there's one thing anyone in this room, anyone will see, anyone that has work who know, I am a fair person. What you're doing to Danny is totally wrong. Danny and I, that are council members, what's wrong with council members is wrong, okay? Him and I have our differences, and everyone has, but again, when something's wrong, I was speaking off of it, I was speaking off of anyone here, the same as people in Jersey City, because I'm here in Jersey City, I'm not here to say about racism, I'm not here to blame anyone. What I see for this, go here, here, those are in the Washington City, we depend on you, you are our leaders. So I would ask of you to please stand up, fix this problem, and then stop doing what we're racist, for anyone, we are not doing anything to the people, that word should not exist. There is no such thing as racist going on a black president.
I, I just want to clarify one.
Yvette.
I just want to clarify one thing, no, it's okay, Yvette, so, no one has, I was counsel, you said, what you've done to Danny, for the viewing audience, I want to make it very clear, as well as everyone in the audience, no one in this city council, if I can, Yvette, if I can, if I can finish speaking, no one in this council has done anything to Danny. Whatever those flyers were that were put out there, I think I could safely say that no one in this council had anything remotely to do with or connected to distributing those.
It's hurt all of us, so, and Yvette, one more thing, just because we have a black president, doesn't mean people are not racist. All right, I just want to clear that, because I'm black. Right, but it is. It is.
Francisco Piana?
I'm very, I'm Mr. Rivera, I'm also a minister of the city. Um, I want to give you a, um, I have a little, um, animal, girls, you know, I know this man, deep, deep, he bragged, he shared some good times and bad times, but the thing about this, most powerful, is the thing about, um, take your time to pray with. A lot of things can be said, but when you read, you can buy it, you can buy it, it reminds you of your past, that's the rule, there are issues, there are issues, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, um, councilman, all, what are you doing here? Why am I here, this is our part, we have a lot of people that's in that community, in our whole system, councilman Rivera has always been there, he knows that my house is one of his, uh, his homes, and, um, one of the things that he said, when, uh, when the city judge came out sometime, one of the things he said, he said, come out past the fire, to keep the, all kids that are in the community, he didn't say, he said, we're black, this man, he didn't say, he says, all kids that are in the community, send them out to the rest of the block of the jobs. But all I'm saying is not here, this is for characters, this is for this man right here, if you don't know what this is, this is a city of the very foundation, it's not a national station, just keep it coming in and out of this, I don't know much of the night, but they're food, this man, he always played the food for that person, and I'm going to tell you, you know, when they want to be there, you know, our God wants to eat, we have some of this, and I believe that he was calling him to go up, because he, he believed in us, he's calling, we need you, we're, we're left, I'm running home, I'm going to bring the rich ass, and I was still operating, I'm trying to go home, that's my community. And that was part of it, it was, he sort of has a problem, and he says, we get the opportunity to turn this area around, he sort of has a spot on that, he says, this is for the root of the whole, yes, 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 and many of these messages, yes, they're on the way. But when I, when I hear the, again, um, continues to last, because that's obviously it's the right, it's not a problem, everybody really hates the team, and together, I don't know where you can get the ball, but someone said, right, for sure, and my pastor always says that, if you don't get it right, this is my least of help, so, again, you know, I just want to say, you can, you know, it's the general part of the nation, while doing the, to do the, 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 which is mentioned, again, um, I believe it's the government's power to do the recovery here, for all these kids, for all people, for the community, as well as the, this is, you know, it's always been given, and, uh, I think he asked about, um, this is two hundred years old, but I just stood up for the family team, he said, that's bad for the people, it's the poor, it's the old, fully bad, everybody, you know, I have, I have a little girl that I see, I have a reason to bring my child, and that is healthy, it's given to me. You know what, there's not a moon, I can't, if I, if I, I don't want to be able to feed her, or my son, or my, any of my son, I think if you're on full, I'm five, five, this is what you're supposed to do, my brother there, only because of this, this man at the back, I know this is okay, or this is what you're going to do, but again, um, you guys have a little girl on the floor, and everything that she said, like, I want to phone, that's a check out, but that's a lie, it's, it really is something good, there's always going to be a story in your heart, there's always a sound line, there's a part, and they're all here, they have to distract, to try to bring you down, to destroy you, because you know what, when you have vision, when you have vision, there's a purpose, and everybody with this man has a little community, and our back forms, so again, go around, when I start a campaign, it's this process, I said, you got cameras in the office, he says, I got a really awesome, that's why he has this, this meaning.
Thank you, thank you. Sharon Ford? Sharon Ford? Sharon? Oh, Siobhan. Because he took, because we inadvertently allowed Laverne to use his time, and so now he's taking this advantage to, uh, since he's on the list, to speak again, right? Okay.
So, the mission of for the folks in the projects, uh, first, because this is very, I'm not going to, uh, teach you, I'm not going to, and then very, that, and I remember, when I say, I remember this whole game, I want to watch the first, a beautiful, so I just want to say that, you know, we all have to go through, and as you can see.
to destroy it, because you know what, when you have vision, when you have vision, there's a purpose. And everything that this man has to do with the community, and our back and forth, so again, go around. When I start a campaign, it's just, I said, you got cameras in the office? He says, I got a really awesome. That's why he has this, this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Sharon Ford? Sharon Ford? Sharon?
Shyvan.
Oh, Shyvan. Because he took, because we inadvertently allowed Laverne to use his time, and so now he's taking this advantage to, uh, since he's on the list, to speak again, right? Okay.
So, the administration offered a focus on the projects. Uh, first, Mr. Perry, the United States of America, you, I'm a whole thing, and very back, and we, I remember, when I say, I remember, it's a whole game, I'm a total artist, a beautiful, so I just want to say that, you know, we all have to go through, and as you can see, that's the community, that greater the equality, instead of greater the void distractions, and it's greater the equality in the citizen, in Jersey City. So, what they're going to do, they're going to put it on a pedestal, and then distract the community, distract the sound barrier between the Hispanic community, Latino community, the Black community, they're trying to distract us, so that we're always going to be equal to the land, and here to sit. So, to be very clear, and I want to say clearly that, there is a position, and you're too smart for us, based on where we're at, you're too smart, man. Little justice, you know, and then I got a justice, I'm going to say, always, the position is to be Black and Brown people, just to be, because it's not. I remember that, I remember going out there, for the better part of my, my duties, I just want to say, you can add, and let's take a time, I'm getting this, uh, distracted, and I'm going to say it. So, we want to hear a man, is because of the law king. The law king is still in the middle, all seven of them, both, this man is our least, until early January of 2014. Why did it take you so long for this to happen? Why have I been, why have I not been enough of this piece in Jersey City? This is peace, this is justice, what happened in person, this is what happened in Brooklyn, in New York City, this is what's happening in Cleveland, Oakland, all across this country, what's happened, what happened to the law king, also, so far, the voters, the families, what happened to Daniel, his bond, and what's happened in jail? That's the thing. Now, I have a cousin who was really shot in the townhouse project. This is my cousin, he got shot, he's a young black man, he could do nothing to work on the projects, before he had to go on the work. He was on probation, he was walking, he got shot away, and because of this, this broken, what happened to him next, is that because he was on probation, he simply went to jail. One of that risks, was his job. This is the problem, so now, my, I have a seat on the photograph, uh, this is on New York City, what if I want to grab, bring that, uh, uh, race, age, uh, the, all the time, or even the city of Jersey City? So, if you all have a problem, I, 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 I'm here to help you, I'm here to appear, I don't see any other, uh, uh, for you, I don't see that. I see them getting shot, seeing them get grabbed, when I know, I know, okay, and I go to Mars, and it's, all the men I saw, they smell the scent of piss, urine, and the smell of lawyers, trapped up in that area. We need all the people in the world, for our, for our children, our Hispanic children, the angels, that are in this community, and any walking on, getting shot, visiting, we need all of them, for them, and for their parents. So, by this end, okay, we want to look at another example, who was hired, whether people hired, you just, you, you try to distract community, what you did, you brought these Black citizens, but you're not willing to handle, what are you doing for the dogs that are here? What are you doing, asking, how are you serving the dogs? You're just giving them a job, from the wall, as you got it from, but I, I hope that vision is there anymore. The other thing about the city is that, you have, in Jersey City, forty percent of the schools are open for school, yet, on another day, they're going to attack, and it's, that I heard in the school issue, it's hurting them, it's killing the citizens. I don't have to come back here, because you're not finding a way to access, or opportunities for our children, and our adults, to this city.
Thank you. Louis Lebron? What's that? Shyvan Ford? Shyvan? No, no, she was asking your name, I'm sorry. Yep.
Good evening. Good evening. And I present, under, I'm a full year, small this year, I can't, uh, president of your city, I'm a society leader, for twenty, for about a year. I'm also the former president, of Jersey City, where we have this special experience, for the last three years, the knowledge of presenting, the knowledge of being, and I will be appropriate, to present to you, the new president of Jersey City, the new president of the town. So, today, I'm here, for two different things. My first job here, I was a little angry about some of the things that went on, in particular, with the council and the, my first reaction, I thought, I'm a passionate person, was to look at a person, waves, stupid, uh, teeth, stupid, and, uh, and, and I said, because that's how, that's how I talk, and I had a cross, I don't know, of the scene. But I'm all, and now, as a businessman, who also is very expensive, so I couldn't talk to you, you know. But for the past few years, I've been working very, very hard, within my authority, the meeting in particular, of throughout Jersey City, to control community, because it's me. I'm here to go ahead now, as soon as I need to go down there, and I'm here, and I'm here to tell you, basically, that's the right message, to the authority of the meeting in particular, because it's very important, for this to work, it's not only all the guys to drive, to, to, to support our, and if Danny, being a authority president, I'm here to tell you, that we support our, that's very important. And while I come over here today, from different ethnicities, I'm very proud of the authority of people that came here today, because it's the most important thing to us, to defend one another, it's important, that's very important. In the past few years, Danny, uh, councilman, I have participated in a lot of, as a lot of cities, particularly people who mean, ordering culture, customs, and most importantly, contributions, in Jersey City, Hudson Avenue, the state of Jersey, and, uh, there have been a lot of people who, uh, who wrote good calls to my island, to this country, and for a better country for today. So, when I hear your comments, and see things in the paper, which I absolutely discuss with, I'm saddened, I am, but as a proper man, I hope that I need to be here today, to support for this city. For the last couple of years, we worked very hard, and he included in our parade festival, a little puzzle, for example, Peter's door, we mean, Jerry's door, and African American, as a honor, a recording beginning of the day. We honored our shoulders last year, as a four year man, for the day. We honored, and we honor, as international, and Danny, as instrumentalists on my side, with all these citizens, and all these people. So, to say that, while I'm basically, we can figure, the thing that there is, we should, but I got something to add to you, is to continue to fight, continue to enlighten, continue to empower, and most importantly, educate our communities, and I'm here, bust your background, free, where you're from, where America is now, okay, and we got to support one another. And while I educate at City Council, it's not making any accusations, I have to hear your guys, I'm here, and I'm standing on the land today, to just support the hand of your right. And I think, I want to say, this is important, and Danny coming out, some of our guests, I'm seeing, so, there, and, but, thank you, I'm keeping behind you.
Your time is up, sir. You're not, you're not the last one. Sorry.
I just want to go over, that you guys work for this community, they don't know who you, you work for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Tyrone Benjamin? Phil, you, you were called earlier, you, you weren't here.
I missed it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Phil. You can talk to us, you can talk to us afterwards, individually. Okay?
Because they're all the people that missed it, we'd have to let everybody come on.
Yeah.
They're all the people that missed their name too, so that means...
Now, Phil, you weren't here for a while. You were one of the first people called. Yeah. Unfortunately, that's the rule, those are the rules that we've established, you're well aware of them, it's not the first time this has happened, so, um, for those who know, Phil's here frequently at the meetings, so, a regular, so you know the rules.
Today, yes, my name is, uh, I'm like, from, uh, Jersey City, uh, so, yeah, I'm a, um, starting, uh, so, I'm a guy, and I'm, uh, we got, we got, we got, uh, 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 we
They did send us, the way we sent this information about next program, so forth.
The next caucus to give us the statistics on what's going on.
I'm not, yeah, I will definitely reach out to the compliance officers, I'm not sure what data they have, because of the previous administration, they weren't really constituted the right way, but hopefully, they'll have something for us. And I do want to point out too, because it's also very important, that Diane Coleman is chairing the closing study committee, which is the foundation for all the work that we're going to do to improve in this area, that's step one, and her group has been meeting on Friday afternoons, working diligently to get us to a strategic plan to start implementing these things, but there's a process that has to be followed, and we're well down the road, which is something that you guys, as a council and the mayor, have taken huge steps forward, especially when you consider how long that study sat.
So, back to the initial point, and just to reinforce, that looking for information at the next meeting, with providing specific data and statistics with regard to enforcement of our project labor agreements and PECAs, performance employment contracting agreements.
Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker is Sean Trice, yeah?
With the council, you know, I'm not going to do it now.
What was the name?
This is just not the place for all of that.
Sean?
Good evening. Um, I'm here to see one, have a coach here, for Danny, and, 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 Phil, it's all my teachers require, sure that's obvious, because we all pay a share, as we remember, um, you know, you see something like that, and then you take it, and you know the person, and you know, and anyone who knows the person, that's, 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 so, you know, speaking to people that all you know, and, you know, contact, you know, I do that, parties, you know, um, I don't know if you know, Danny, he is, my son, play baseball, I remember him, for, for a lot of years, this is my twelve years old, he's now in high school, and one of the things that, when I first came, it was obvious that, you know, he had played by himself, and, you know, that showed him that he was a kid, you know, I don't know those fathers, I remember my children's lives, and so, having him coach my team, it was, it was a trust that I gained, by being around my brothers, my girls, and a trust not just in X and O, playing baseball, but a trust that, that he going to take care of that family, and I kind of stepped back, enjoyed the games, and watched my son go through different situations, and being right here, not a guy, whether it was, kind of better years, better teammates, being frustrated, and being able to move through those frustrations, and then we got time to just get to talk about things outside of baseball, about, about everything, you know, so, when I see things like that, at, at, and I'm very sensitive to this, and I'm very sensitive to being around people, so I can sit to those things, but I don't think it's wrong to that, you know, you did a bad game, you lost some time, you did, things that said, you got a trophy, you know, I'm never changing anything like that, so, so, I know, yes, you know, on that, and, you know, just, I don't know if anything this council can do, as it refers to the, to the, moving article, but, you know, I know that, you know, I'm here, that you know, follow your best portion, and I think that you continue that, you know, you know, you support my team. Great man, great experience to you, and I appreciate your service to this city.
Thank you, sir.
Need a break?
Yeah, let's continue.
Well, Danny...
Couple of words. So, let me address just a couple of issues before I give you a five-minute spiel, I think you guys could time it, no, I'm just playing. To my council, Diane, you're a hard worker, in war effort, and I just want you to know that.
Yeah, I passed out almost a thousand applications for that summer program, that's why there were so many African-American children, applications submitted, that's why.
And you're a hard worker, and I love you for that. To my council, I just want you guys to know that they have been supportive of me, you know, during this time, whether or not it was public or not, you know, but, you know, within our city atmosphere, in the council, they have been supportive, one hundred percent. Now, to address everybody that came here, I really commend your advocacy, I appreciate that, and I thank you passionately for what you did today. To address that very, very, very bad tasteless flyer, hey, listen, as you can see, I have a track record that stuff like that doesn't really bother me much, you know, Terrence McDonald has been dying for me to say something else, but, you know, I said, listen, you know, it's like a pebble trying to knock down a brick wall, somebody throwing a pebble trying to knock down a brick wall. One thing I can say is, I really hope that the, that the drafters of this flyer would watch the city council in Channel One, and I could address them by saying thank you for allowing me to look at, yet, a level of politics through a different angle, and it allows me to make sure I have a different guard on, and with the support of this city council, and the support I have, I have of all of you that showed me your love, listen, no weapon formed against me shall prosper. So, with that said, I think that if we didn't have so many speakers, we probably would have broken the record today with council meeting of thirty minutes, but, once again, from the bottom of my heart, I really want to thank my family, friends, and supporters that came out to me, for me today, to show me love, thank you very much.
Any questions on petitions to communication six A through six T? Hearing none, there are no officer communications, we have reported directors eight A and eight B, any questions? Hearing none, moving along. On a vote for our claims and addendum number one, councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Ladies and gentlemen, if you exit, please exit quietly, we still have the rest of the meeting to get through, thank you very much. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lvaro.
Aye.
Claims and addendum number one are approved nine zero. Onto our resolutions.
Folks, as you depart, please exit quietly, the council still has regular business to conduct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On items ten A through ten J, with the exception of ten E, which has been withdrawn, councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lvaro.
Aye.
Items ten A through ten J, with the exception of ten E, are approved nine zero. Items ten K through ten U, with the exceptions of ten O through ten S, which have been withdrawn, councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And council President Lvaro.
Aye.
Items ten K through ten U, with the exceptions of ten O through ten S, are approved nine zero. Items ten V through ten Z four, councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
No on Z four.
An aye on the rest?
The rest, yes.
Thank you. Councilperson Young.
Hey, sorry, I just wanted to be clear on that, did you go through reso fifteen zero seven eight?
Yes.
That reso, the council asked us to do some additional work, they wanted us to check that reso with, let's see if JCRNA or someone else could play a role with that, that was supposed to be withdrawn. Sorry, that reso was withdrawn, so, if you could just...
Ten F?
Ten F.
Ten F. Ten F resolution fifteen oh zero seven eight, I'm sorry, they missed that on me.
They were supposed to...
The caucus.
Because the council asked us to do some work on that.
So let me recap that vote. Items ten A through ten J, with the exception of ten E and ten F, that have been withdrawn, they are approved nine zero.
So we're back at...
Z four.
Z four.
Z four.
The vote?
Except, I say yes, excepted Z one. Till I get your main case.
Did you get a date, Vivian, on the, on when we're going to receive the year-over-year? Can you hear me? Yeah, I'm fine.
But it's a very bad.
I don't know, I don't know what else to do. I'm not working. Do you have the date? Do you have the date when we're going to be able to understand the year-over-year for the grant services?
I'm sorry, you need a microphone, Deputy Mayor.
So, the director spoke earlier today, his contacts, they said they did not have any markers that were seen in this book, and because of that, they did not know whether that would be able, um, to say difference, um, or to this situation, and it seems you have...
I think Sean needs a microphone back.
Aye. Now you're not on. Yeah. Aye. Z four.
Aye.
Aye. And, and, uh, whatever, I am ten to five, ten to seven, ten to seven, and ten to ten is included. Pass for the new.
Aye.
Pass for the new.
Aye.
Pass for the new.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass for the new.
No on Z nine, aye on all the rest? No on Z nine, aye on all the rest?
Second.
Second.